...meeting of Navasota City Council on 12th February, 4:31 PM. We will go to item number two, workshop discussion regarding developer partnership in Navasota ISD and City of Navasota. Mr. Weeks?
Mayor, members of council, tonight we have Kept Property Group, the developer here. He's going to come up in a little bit and do a presentation. I want to kind of give you a history of how we got to where we are today. So as you know, in our community, there's a really drastic need for rental properties. We've, as part of our stakeholder meetings with the school district, the county, and the chamber, we talk about developments coming in. I know the school district has been looking for rental properties, especially for new teachers. A lot of their new teachers are having to live in College Station, Bryan area, and commuting. And so, one of the things that we started looking at is, the school district has a couple pieces of property that other developers have been interested in maybe develop and try to bring some rental properties to the community. And so, we had a developer last year that approached the group and discussed about the area over by the Brewley Practice Field. It's the, right behind the stadium. And so, that was one of the areas that a developer thought would be a great location for whether some town homes, or cottages, or just some type of rental properties. This superintendent went back to his board, talked to his board, told them about what ideas were, and the board of trustees determined, they liked that location, but that's not necessarily the location that they prefer. They wanted to look at the property that they own over on Stacy Street. So if you, over there were the Nelk, right there between the Nelk and Hidden Hills Park that the city owns. There's parcels down through there along Stacy Road. That, part of it is in the floodway, and part of it's in the flood zone, and then there's just a small portion that's not in either of those. And so, we had a couple developers start looking at that area, and Kept Properties approached both the city and the school district about trying to figure out a way to do some partnerships, to bring some rental properties into that location. What you have before you in the packet there is a proposal for them to come and build approximately 21 one-to-two-bedroom cottage-style locations on Stacy Street, as well as at Stacy and Wade's Way, a couple of locations there on Wade's Way. And it'd be like, when I talk about partnerships, so ideally, as the school district would provide the property to them, they would be looking for possible permit and fee giveaways for the project to come, as ways for the city to participate in this partnership, as well as looking at what they call guaranteed rents. And so, we've had several developers approach the city about this new concept where a lot of lending institutions are now requiring more equity from developers. And as a way to try to meet that requirement, developers are looking at partnerships with local governments and possible ISDs. And what that means is, is either the ISD, the city, or maybe the chamber partners would all have a guarantee, where they guarantee X amount of rent on those units for X amount of years. And what that mean would be, the school district, for instance, if they have five units that they're guaranteed to have, that they have to have rents for, they would offer those to their new teachers, or any administration, or anybody that's within the ISD that wants to rent that. And if they're able to rent it, they would rent it out to them. If they weren't, then they would be able to go outside that area. But it would be first right refusal for school district. Same thing with the city. So city, you would maybe have five units that you would have available for you to rent out to employees. And if employees, you don't have any employees that want to rent that, then you go out to the community. The chamber has shown interest within the business community that might, maybe this might be some needs. And so, again, it's just a different way to meet that liquidity needs and to be able to get this development moving forward. And so, tonight, I'm going to ask, I don't know who's going to do the presentation. If y'all want to come on up, introduce yourself to the council. And we've got the presentation here. We can either go page by page, or you can talk about it. They just did a presentation to the school board at the last school board meeting. And so, I wanted to bring to the council, so council could hear them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Very well said. There's not much left for us to say. Thank you. No, good afternoon, mayor and council. I appreciate your time. My name is Jesse Durden. I'm the president of Kept Property Group. You may not have heard that name before, but you might have heard Caprock Development out of College Station, and that's our commercial development company that I've been operating for 13 years. It was about a decade ago that I rode around town with Mayor Miller, and we were talking about the need for affordable housing for the same group of folks that Mr. Weeks just described. Since that time, Navasota's been on my mind, trying to figure out how to help that need here. And we came up with this project. Initially, actually, we came up with this project as a for-sale project, and we're doing that in Fredericksburg right now. Because they're experiencing some of the same things that you guys are experiencing in terms of the lack of affordable housing. Now, that product is a for-sale product, so it's a little bit different. But I'll give you an example of one of the comments that was made by the HR lady at Memorial, I'm sorry, Methodist Hospital there in Fredericksburg. She said they hired two emergency room nurses, had all the paperwork done. And about a month later, the nurses called back and said, hey, we have to rescind our acceptance of that offer, because we can't find a place to live. And these were nurses that were desperately needed in the ER and the OR. So, that's the type of thing that we're trying to address. We have kind of a boutique cottage proposal here. We like doing projects like this, small projects. I think one of the challenges in Navasota is you'll get some folks that need to do 80, 100, 200 units to make the rentals make sense. Just based on where we are, what our proficiencies are, this is the type of project that we really enjoy doing and want to be a part of. I'm going to let my new associate, Jacob, take it from here. He is an Aggie. Give him a, he just graduated in December, so we're going to give him a shot at presenting this to you guys, but we'll be here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
As Jesse mentioned, my name's Jacob Schaefer. So, essentially, as Mr. Weeks said, what we're proposing is a 21-unit development right there off of Stacy and Wade's Way. And these units are going to average about 1,000 square feet, as Mr. Weeks said. They're two-bedroom, one bathroom. Ideally, we're looking, you know, to try and provide affordable housing for teachers, and city employees, and police officers, first responders. And not sure what else that I can add that Mr. Weeks didn't say earlier.
Lupe, can you pull up the photos, so we can show them where the location is? I think there's exhibit two. And actually, probably two pages after that, maybe. Next one, keep going. The next, there one right there. Can you, I don't know if there's a way to blow that one up?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, yeah. Is there a way to make it bigger?
So, what you can see here is existing, the red lines are existing lock configurations for the parcel zone by Northside, I'm sorry, Navasota Independent School District. The white overlays are our pairings of cottages from our floor plans that we have developed. You can see that we have essentially straddled the pickleball court there, because that is a newly improved and very popular amenity. This configuration with those along Stacy and down along the school there represent the total of 21 units. I think, generally speaking, what we have in front of you is a proposal to get your comments on. You know, again, generally, if we could accomplish a longer lease term on 10 of the units at a reduced rate to both the city and Navasota ISD, that would really help us get this project kicked off and going. Those rent rates, and, you know, we mentioned one-to-two-bedroom, that's, those are really the type of things that are up for discussion. You know, what does your, what are the staff that you think would rent these units? What needs do they have? And we'd further develop the economics from there.
And what are those rents also? What kind of, what rents? I can't remember what you said at the school district meeting, so...
In average, we're talking about an average of 1,000 square feet, and an average of $1,450 per month in rent.
Does that include any covered parking, or non?
There's currently no covered parking in this. There's a T configuration with parking in the back. On our Fredericksburg project, we are providing some options for folks to cover one or both of those spaces for each unit. Part of the reason we like this tract is because of its direct access on the Stacy. You know, infrastructure expenses are relatively low. So, it's a, a couple of good parcels that are kind of ripe for the development at this point.
So, this will be parking on the street?
Second.
I said, will this be parking on the street?
Uh, no, sir.
It's at the back.
Rear parking.
Essentially drive in between the units, and there's a T parking in the back with two spaces per unit.
You kind of like the way those duplexes are, like a road in the back? Is that right?
Well, we could look at a road and direct access in the back. Currently, what you have shown there is what we're doing in Fredericksburg, which is coming off of Stacy Street. There'll be, I don't know, it looks like eight or so driveways.
Oh, okay.
A pair of units would share a driveway, and each unit in the back of it would have two uncovered parking spaces.
So, do you have the laser pointer?
Yes.
Would you just point where you're talking about that the driveways would go?
Right there. And you can see the T configuration there.
Ah, gotcha. Okay, they have their own driveway.
Yeah, okay. The unit on the far left is a single unit, so we've sketched that up with its own driveway. But try to pair up units to share that drive and keep expenses lower.
And just to make sure I understand what you're saying, because I think the mayor said something different. It's not a shared driveway. It's one driveway that goes in between the two units with two parking spaces on both sides, or two, I don't know.
Correct. So, shared driveway, as in shared between this unit and that unit. And that would be the shared driveway there. We have not drawn a shared driveway along the back at this point. I'm not sure if that's something that we would want to do or not. It does take up more space and eliminate some of our opportunities for parking closer to the unit.
What's the orientation of the parking places?
They, are they, this way?
Are they like this, or this?
They're going, they're going left to right, east to west.
East to west.
And those have been designed by a civil engineer to have a nice area where you can back up and then get back going out of that unit. So, a turnaround.
So, what's the width between the two units? So, if I parked in the middle just to be a jerk to my neighbor, could the other guy ever get out?
No, sir.
It's 15 to 20 feet between each unit. I think those driveways are 12. Is that right?
So, that's a no. If I wanted to be a jerk, I could just park in the middle of the thing and block them in?
Probably so.
I'd have you towed. I'm just saying.
You ever watch Cops? I mean, that happens a lot. There are people parking those little things, and you can't get out. You're just going in for a minute.
And council, one of the things that Lupe and I, you know, wanted to make sure that y'all are aware of is, so the floodway goes probably to where their measurement line is up there, to the, to the north. And along Stacy Road there, that's, some of that's in the flood zone, and some of it's not.
I wonder if our pond that's never, has any water in it could act as a detention or retention. I know you've got different property owners. I mean, I know the city owns that back.
Did the school district act on this?
We've presented to them at the last board meeting, but no action has been taken. This proposal, we wrote to them, since they're the property owner, but we mentioned the city of Navasota, and kind of hoping you guys talk and tell us what the next move would be. If you're, both parties are interested, what kind of agreement that might entail.
So, I guess mainly if the district, school district, when I say district, if they don't move forward on it, it's a moot situation?
If, potentially, yes. Unless they're willing to sell the property, and we could talk to you. You know, that would obviously increase the cost of the project and the rents. But we like the project, but hopefully an ISD is on board.
You are requesting that they deed you the property free, right?
Yes, sir.
And then in return, rent it back to them?
Correct, at a reduced rate to market. So, we'll have, again, kind of rough numbers, we hope. 10 units leased to municipal or school district folks, and then the remaining 11 units will be rented out to the market, just generally to everybody.
So, they said that the school district have five, and the city has five. And the school district uses their five, and the city, five stay vacant for three months. Who take care of that rent?
The city. The city does.
Right. We're asking for essentially a long-term lease from the city to act as the tenant in those five units. It would then be the city who sublets those units to their employees or someone else that they see fit. But our contract for those five units, our lease contract, would be with the city. That's what protects me and allows me to get the project financed.
In Fredericksburg, you're not going through municipality or school. That's just kind of a private deal.
It's a private deal. You know, they're, they scrutinize the project really hard. They have a lot of, the short-term rentals there, and they've seen prices on their real property just shoot through the roof, and locals can't find a place to live that they can afford. So, there was a lot of political desire to have a more affordable project. You know, for us, there's a couple ways to get affordability. One is just build it super cheap. Another way is build it dense. And then the final way is just build it smaller. And we've kind of taken that density and the smaller, and put those together. We like to build quality projects, and so this is something that we feel like people would have a pride of, pride that they're renting and living in that space.
When you say affordable, when you say $1,400, I did some checking today. Over across the street there, Ruth Court, Dove Crossing, talked to a couple people that own units there. Their max rent is like $9.50 a month. And you're, and one of them was a four-bedroom. And you're saying one to two small cottages at $1,400 at a reduced rate?
So, I'd have to check that comp to see exactly what that property entails. But generally, what we're seeing is, let's say, teachers, for example, are choosing, whether it's because of amenities or the age of the housing, they're choosing to pay more in College Station, and live in College Station than taking that rental property as an example. So, I'm not sure about that, those specific properties, but generally, this is much, much less expensive than the city of College Station. And we think, really, as you compare it to, it's hard to compare it to most of the things in Navasota because of the age of those other properties here.
Well, also, you know, drove by the Dove Crossing, and can't think of the street, but I think Hathaway is one of the listing out there. Four-bedroom, brand-new home. No one lived in it before. $1,800 a month, four-bedroom.
That seems like a heck of a deal to me.
Yeah. And council member, I don't know if you know about this, but, because I don't know if you were on the council when this happened, but out in Dove Crossing, there are 13 homes out there that are tax-exempt homes. That's through a nonprofit organization. They pay no taxes, no county, no school, no city taxes out there. And they're required to have rents below $1,000. And that might, I don't know, I'm not saying, that might be one of the homes that you looked at.
And Pecan Lakes?
No, Dove Crossing.
Okay, I'm talking about Pecan Lakes.
Oh, no, just Dove Crossing.
I read some places the other day that Hayes County is having a big problem with affordable housing. Hayes County, of course, is a suburb of Austin. And that their rents have gone up to $1,451, I think, is the average price. And how it was pricing everybody out of the market, because that's more expensive than the housing in Austin, which is supposed to be bellwether high value, high dollar. So, I don't, I don't see that as being affordable housing here in Navasota.
Well, I mean, I, we've studied markets across the state, and again, $1,450 even for Hayes seems very cheap. So, we'd be happy to run those comps and get you some more information on that. But I can tell you from a construction cost perspective, that for a new product, and this is done very efficiently, that's pretty much the minimum that we could charge to bring a project like this to the city. But like I said, we are happy to share with you the comps that we're using. But I also know the construction costs, which is kind of a constraint in this particular situation.
Well, it sounds to me like you're asking for a lot from both our organizations to put into your pocket. And I don't know how you could, I don't know how you could ask for anything else from us. It seems to me that, I have two homes that I rent, and one of them is almost that, the other one is not even close. They're not new, but after the first person lives in it, it's not new. So, do these have any yards?
Just small yards, I mean.
Where are they? In the back, in the side?
This configuration, they're mostly in the front and in the rear, behind the parking.
No sidewalks?
No sidewalks drawn at this point.
Is there room for sidewalks?
There likely is room. What you're seeing here, again, is just a GIS image with our floor plans overlaid onto it. So, we have, you know, the scaling could be a little bit off. They're not professionally engineered. Intended to kind of discuss the concept, to hear some of your concerns and thoughts, and, you know, refine it, and see if it's something that might work for you with further development.
What's the size of the lots?
I don't recall, sir. Roughly maybe 70 by 115? Somewhere around there. And those, that number is the red lines that exist today. We would likely replat. So, that would be an example of one fee we would ask to be waived, would be the plating fee.
Yeah, I see that you're asking the school district for the property. Then you would be asking the city for tax abatement, waiving of fees, rental guarantees, offsetting development costs of the project. Like Councilman Foltz says, it's quite a bit that you're asking for, and it's going to be a long time before the city receive that return.
Our thought is, and I don't have the direct formula to equate what we're proposing here to how it benefits the city, but we think this gives you a unique ability as a school district and a city to attract and retain talent that may be going to other communities, or maybe living in other communities and not utilizing your grocery stores, your restaurants, that type of thing. I don't have that formula, though.
I would like for you to bring that formula back to us, and just sell it to us, and see whether we want to buy it or not. Because right now, I can't buy this, because it's, like Foltz says, it's asking for quality.
So, if I would share with you, just big picture, some things related to multifamily development. And this is just my experience. So, it's only as deep in detail as what I've seen in the last 15 years. But let's take College Station as an example, because that's what I'm familiar with, and that's what I can speak about. Most developers that come to that market, they want to build at least 150 units. In order to justify that, they look around for comps of properties that, you know, zero to five years old. They look at the occupancies and their rent rates. What's really hard for Navasota is finding comps. They may be nonexistent for properties like we're talking about here. They're certainly nonexistent for 150 to 200-unit complexes. So, what happens is you go to a bank, a lender, and that lender says, hey, it seems like a great idea. We love Navasota. You guys know what you're doing, but we just don't have the data to support your project. So, that's where the longer-term leases come in with you guys, is we say, look, not only are we willing to invest our capital there, we've got the other stakeholders that are willing to do the same. And we think it's a, it's a step in the right direction. We believe in Navasota and all the things that are happening here at the city and have been for well over a decade. We believe in what's happening in Northside, I'm sorry, I keep saying Northside. Navasota ISD. You know, we're, we think it's an opportunity for you to start moving towards, getting the attention of folks like that, that can build bigger and bigger units and potentially deliver, you know, 150, 200 units sometime in the next five to 10 years. Because I think, I think the market will need them, quite frankly.
I think you're right. To me, though, it's a matter of, are you riding on our backs, or are we riding on your backs? And it feels more like we're carrying you to make this happen in a floodplain, number one. Number two, it's already pretty densely populated. If you look at the streets, if you drive down the streets, you know that there's cars on both sides of the streets, and it's hard to get through there. And then you don't have yards. That means you don't really want families there.
That's correct.
And so, it would just be a...
Single person.
And again, I have a hard time finding somebody that can afford the $1,500 that I charge for a three-bedroom with a big yard.
I mean, I would, I don't, I can't do the math. 20 units times $180 per square foot is $180,000. Times 20 units is, is that $3.6 million? I mean, that's the type of investment that we're talking about. And so, we, while we do appreciate everything that the city in Navasota could do, it is still my name on the 3.6, trying to make that work for the long term.
Well, it is. However, you're going to ask the city to have five, and the school district to have five. And so, then you're not going to really have those on your neck. We're going to help carry you through that, I think. I don't know. Just my kind of initial reaction.
Sure.
It's, I would like to see that if you, if this was done, that there would be a road in the back for, for parking, for driveways, kind of like what you have over on Ruth Court, or Wade's Way, whatever one it is that actually has the driveway that goes down back. But...
It would seem like that would be cheaper, less concrete.
Yeah.
Maybe.
You'd do away with the driveway in between and just utilize that concrete in the back. I mean, certainly a possibility. You know, one of the things in, this is a very conceptual proposal. And so, what our effort here is, is to test the waters, see if this is a concept that you'd be interested in. You know, we can throw out numbers, we can throw out square footages. I could have told you 10 one-bedrooms and 11 two-bedrooms. But I don't know where that target is. So, what we have been, what we are committed to do, if you're interested in continuing to take some steps, is to be very transparent with you. From construction costs, to rate of returns, the cost of capital, so you know that your investment is, that you're getting this project, if it is what you want, you're getting a rent rate that is extremely, extremely competitive based on what you guys have invested in the project yourselves. So, we're willing to do that. That's not why we came here tonight, because I could do a whole lot of pro forma modeling and be way off from what you guys may have interest in.
I think something that would be helpful, and Ryan, we can provide them with that housing study?
I think, I think we've...
We've already did.
Okay, because that kind of gives them an idea on what rent. And it definitely wasn't $1,400. It was, I think, lower than that.
And again, that's, going off of memory, that's much older project, product, very, very different. And that's product that may, we believe may not be as of interest to young teachers, young professionals, that are, you're attempting to draw to this community.
Because I think that the housing study talked about what people would be willing to, you know, what would be in their budget, things like that, that I just didn't know if that was taken into account.
What would it take to get the rents down to $1,100?
I'd have to get back to you on that. It would take a lot.
I have a problem with the, is one of the basic premises of this whole thing, which is before you even entered into the thing. And I've talked to some members of the school board previously on this. The issue that comes foremost to their minds is retention. They want to retain the good teachers. Their idea, I think, or ideal, would be these teachers coming in, fresh from college, being great teachers, and being here... being great teachers and being here for several, several years, living in the community, meeting a stellar partner here in Navasota, getting married, staying here, having children, and just continuing on and on to stay here, retire from the Navasota School District. It's been a long time, but if you put yourself into a situation where you're fresh out of college and in your early twenties, it's been a long time for me.
He reminds me that it's been a long time for me too.
But you, you think of what these people are looking for when they come here. And with, what is it, seventy thousand students in College Station? At A and M and another twelve to fifteen thousand at Blynn. And Navasota doesn't stand a chance in attracting their interest for their social lives. And a lot of them, I drove for thirty years or something going back and forth the other way. It doesn't bother them that much to drive back and forth. And I, I think that part of the, the discussion comes about when they're asked why they turned the job down or why they don't live in Navasota. The accepted answer is couldn't find any place to stay. It's a lot easier to say and not going to be questioned rather than saying, hey, they don't have enough parties. You know, the social life is better in College Station, man, I want to be up there where the action is. So I, I think that we're a solution in search of a problem. But that's not your problem.
I can also tell you that we've had our company Christmas party at Rail and Rye for the last three years. I love Rail and Rye. What they've done down there is fantastic. I was, I saw Nodos before they turned it into what they do today. My wife and I are coming down here on Wednesday for Valentine's Day. So I don't think that you're wrong, but I do see a lot of glimmers of hope going in that direction of, hey, Navasota does have a lot to offer. Look at, look at the facilities and the investment you guys have made. And I think now we're seeing those folks step up, those private investors do those things. So there's a lot of truth to what you're saying, but I think there's also a lot of hope in, in the community.
Yeah, but as your partner said, it's been a while since you've been a twenty-five-year-old.
Also true, also true. I don't like to admit it because I still, I still feel young, you know? Well, I hear some directives, study some rent comps, maybe give you guys a table, something to look at. Uh, we can work with economic development on trying to come up with that formula, what that economic impact might be. That's not my specialty, but we could probably get some help-
Yeah, Raina can-
On that. And then we'll take another look back at the housing study and specifically at what rents that would be considered affordable for the types of folks, and we're thinking city staff and teachers that, um, that may, that you may want to attract. And we'll see if we can get there. You know, if eleven hundred is the number, we can come back and tell you, here's what we can do for eleven hundred. It may not be a thousand square feet, it may be all one bedrooms. But we'll put that in front of you and see if that's worth your consideration.
And then we'll continue to work with the school district and see what their thoughts are and see how they're heading, but you know, whether they like the proposal or do they just want to sell the property and then figure out, let the developer figure out where they're going to go from there? Those are questions we've got to also get with the school district because it's their property. Somehow we got in the middle to help put, put it together, but we will definitely keep working together.
Well, there's no question of the need. There is no question of the need. I mean, that, that is fact.
Yep.
So it's just figuring out a way to, you know-
In the same way that y'all have to prove to your investors that this is a project, our investors are called taxpayers. And we have to be able to do what's right for them because these are their dollars, not ours.
Yeah, and that's, that's-
And if the vast majority of those taxpayers can't afford fourteen hundred dollars a month, then we're not doing right by them. That's the problem. I think it's a wonderful project. I think that there's a way to make that work, which is not quite there yet.
Is there any requirement that the, that they have to follow the same guidelines as what our ordinance, our subdivision ordinance? So do they have to have sidewalks? Do they have to have lighting? Do they have to have all the things, green space?
So those are all questions that, um, there are variances that you can look into. Um, there are, you know, ideally, you know, when we talk about fees and things like that, um, when projects like this come up, generally, uh, I can, I can justify to a taxpayer, you're not out any cost. So, um, uh, we have a building official now. So that building official can go out and inspect the homes. So, um, you know, if there's a cost for us sending something out that we have to pay for, we already have an employee on staff. They're already going to have to do the duties. Um, and so allowing them to do that, a water meter. Well, you got to pay for the water meter, but we already have staff that goes out and sets, sets the water meter. So you're already paying staff to do work.
We could say that about any new construction-
I got it. But these are, these are things that we could do, say, as this is, this is how the city's participating as a partner in the project.
That's what you're asking for.
But, um, you know, tax abatements and stuff like that, those are things we need to talk about. What are we really talking about? Um, but one of the big concerns, what I've heard from most of y'all is going to be the fourteen hundred dollars. I mean, you're right, I mean, you can go out to Conlakes, I think someone's out there that's got eighteen hundred dollars for a four-bedroom, um, nearly two thousand square foot home. Um, there are some other developers that are looking at wanting to come into Navasota. They're looking, wanting to do around eleven hundred dollar, one, one bedroom, just studio, one bedroom, um, apartments. And so with that, that's why I ask eleven hundred dollars, how, what's it going to take to get there to be competitive? Cause fourteen fifty is a little bit much, probably.
I've got a question here. What, we're just using the word five and five. Uh, okay, now if the city has five, uh, five apartments and don't have five employees to rent those five, do they open them up to the general public or?
Yes, yeah. Okay. Yes, sir. It, it's just, so we call first right, first right, first right of refusal is, school district, you have five, city, you have five. So if you don't have five people, then you can reach out to whoever you want to about trying to sublease it.
Okay, and I guess in the meantime, let's just say this happens tomorrow, that the houses are finished, you're done, you're ready to rent. And the city don't have five people to put in there. Do you give them thirty days to find someone to put in there or do you want rent starting that day from that entity?
That's a great question. You know, we're here very, very early in the process and so-
But you know, just thinking of it.
So, so kind of what we've, we've scheduled out is I think, you know, six-month construction duration. So we would hope that during that six-month, you would able to, be able to attract and, and those employees and say, hey, this is part of your package, starting January one or July one or whatever it is. I haven't thought through, if you can't fill those, then what? But I mean, it's certainly something we could work-
And why would, is, I don't know that the city's in the position to be a landlord or be responsible for renting, uh, housing. That seems to me to be asking-
It's actually new.
It sounds new.
It is, um, we've had several developers reach out to us that brought this concept to us. We had one that wanted to do two hundred and twenty units when I first came here and they wanted us to do sixty percent of that. So that's, you know, over, over a hundred units.
Well, I mean, maybe that's good for a city that has staff to do that and worry with renting them and leases and whatever, but we can't keep up with the stuff we have going on now. I don't know that that's appropriate to, and how many, how many new employees do we?
We don't know this, of course.
But we hire one or two, um, I don't know, how many new employees do you hire a year that would need those, that would fit in line with a one-year lease?
And, and I don't know that. I know that, I know that our Assistant City Manager and our Marketing Communications Director, both of them look for housing. Um, I know that Kristen wanted rental, couldn't find a rental property here, so she had to go to Bryan Call Station area. I know that Lloyd wanted to buy something here, looked and ended up purchasing a brand-new home. He wanted an older home. So there are those, uh, you know, we, police officers, uh, you know, I, I hear, I hear what Councilmember Gessner was talking about uh, in College Station, younger people want things to go due to, uh, and you're coming all the way from College Station here, but you're older too. And so coming to Rail and Rye, getting out of the-
College town.
College town, I could understand that.
You build your house here.
Building, uh, two hundred and fifty-eight houses in Navasota ISD.
So with that, we have a police department and-
That's almost Navasota.
And we, we'd love for our police officers to live here, but I would tell you a lot similar to what some teachers probably are thinking is, I don't want to live in the same town that I'm giving tickets to people or pulling people over. And I don't really want, I see the kids all the time. I don't want to see them when I go to the grocery store or go to the store or out at an event. There are people that, that have those concepts. And so ideally, we need rental property. We just got to figure out how to, how best to, to make it work. And what I'm hearing from you tonight is this type model is not what you're looking for. Let's tweak it some. And so we'll work with the school district and work with the government and try to come up with something, maybe to bring back to you at future date, along with some of that extra data that you're asking for.
I didn't see anything in the presentation that split this five and five between us and the school district. Uh, and that's not, in your concept, it would be something we'd have to work out with the school district.
Yes, sir. So I think that what's in here was what they originally presented to the school district and it was just geared toward the school district. But I will tell you, um, in the conversations that we've had through the stakeholder meeting, I think Commissioner Cox has been in those meetings where we've talked with the Chamber too. Um, the Chamber has reached out to their business, businesses and they might be interested too. So it, it's basically using all the different pools that we have to put together. But who is ultimately responsible would be to be the school district a hundred percent or the city a hundred percent or a split between the city and the school district.
So we hire a new, or the school district hires a new teacher. And they signed lease for this special rate. And then they quit. Does that kill their lease too?
Well, I mean, generally, you're going to have to put up deposits. I mean, I'm not in the landlord business, so I don't, I mean-
Exactly, we're not in landlord-
So Councilman Foltz would, would probably know more about this. But, um, you put up a deposit, it protects you for those X times and, um, and generally for teachers, you would run it from their contract period generally.
Well, what I'm talking about is sucking up the pool. We have this, this great idea to do these special cases because they need affordable housing. They get the affordable housing and then quit the basic job and go and do something else type thing. Do we kick them out because they don't have that basis anymore?
So that would be something we would have to work out the, the, the policy procedures for. But I'm assuming for school district, uh, you would carry out that term unless you move? Uh, maybe there's a, uh, some clause you're able to get out of it. Um, I, I don't know how that would work. Definitely we can work out the needy ingredient of it, how it's going to do. But just the philosophy of this, what I'm hearing tonight is, uh, based on what's been presented is not going to work this, this way. Let's work on coming back with some different other options.
Let me ask you something about cost of construction. Is it doing the cottage style? Is it, is that less expensive in cost than doing like a strip of apartments, just as an example?
No, because-
Old town homes or, you know-
No, but once, you can save money by connecting the units. You can, but you know-
Just I would just throwing out some-
It is interesting because as, as I hear you guys discuss different comps, we got four bedrooms at, let's say, eighteen hundred bucks a month. Then there's some, possibly some subsidized housing. Then there's studio apartments, which gives me the, I thought that maybe they're two or three stories and they're tightly compact, six hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty square feet. We're not any of those products. We think this product could be the right product because it gives those folks a little bit of elbow room. It get, they don't have to hear their neighbor next door, over the top of them. So we love the product. We need to get, we need to get the price right. But it is also not directly comparable to some of the things that have been mentioned. If I'm a teacher and yes, it's eighteen hundred bucks for four bedrooms, but I don't need four bedrooms. I need one or two. And so I don't want to pay the eighteen hundred no matter what because I just don't need it. I'm going to find something cheaper. So we'll, we'll keep working on that, of, of course. And then another thought too is property management companies. So we'll have our eleven units professionally managed by a property management company that does this kind of thing every day. It may make some sense for the city and school district to be-
Which they'll have to pay for.
Sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, but it just, it seemed, I don't know, it just still, it has the taste that you're wanting us to do everything and you're going to come in and build them and you're going to run away and now we're left to hope that we can rent these suckers, uh, for the amount, I don't know. Mr. Hassel just built the whole subdivision, building homes and was able to build them and sell them um, for eighteen hundred or less. And you're coming in wanting to, asking us to absorb potentially a third of your cost? I mean, I don't know, it just, and I don't know, I just threw that out there, maybe it's much smaller than that.
It's much smaller.
Yeah.
We're bringing that number two.
We're renting this one behavior for you, right? We're not getting the rent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now you, there are, there's some thought to, well, there's, there's a thought to, you guys rent it from us at what we think is, and prove up is a competitive rate based on the contributions that you made in fiat, um, waivers and that type of thing. But you could offer it to a staffer at nine hundred a month. And then the city covers as part of their compensation package, the additional five hundred fifty a month. I don't, I'm, I'm not in HR and I don't know how you guys attract employees, but that was a thought that's been described or mentioned as we've gone through this.
And this may have been in here and I may have forgotten what I read here, but what length of time would you would want the city and the school district to guarantee those ten units for you?
We're asking for ten years.
Ten years?
Yes, sir.
The five-year option.
With one five-year.
And then I just heard you say something prior to, um, me asking that question. You said that you would have a proper management take care of your eleven units. So who would take care of the other ten?
Well, I was assuming those would be your units, so it's, you know, that's, you would take care of them.
Who would have to take care of the maintenance part?
Well, we would, what we, what we're doing in Fredericksburg is all of the landscaping for all of our units there, which we have twenty-two right now, is, is done as part of a common area association. So, you know, we would likely propose something like this as an operating expense for all of these units as well. So they all look the same and you're not counting on a new teacher to mow her own grass on a regular basis. That is taken care of.
That's an interesting point. Where's the common area? That's what I asked, because there's not.
Well, I-
Pickle wall, of course.
Which we pay for, the school district.
You do have amenities there. Those are attractive. The park and the pickleball courts are attractive amenities and that's why, one of the, another reason why we like the site. You know, common areas and we're doing the ones in Fredericksburg as condos, but, um, you know, there's, there's common areas that are shared between two units. So like the Common Drive would be a common area shared between just those two units. And then there's areas around there, common areas that are shared by all landowners in that, in that development. So we'd work through that as part of just a normal development process. But I appreciate y'all's question. It's going to be a team effort. Great questions like this help us present a, a better project. And so thank you for that and we will be back in touch.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting that on the workshop. You like, thanks for putting on a workshop or you just, no, thanks for putting on a workshop.
That's what workshops are for. Item three, workshop discussion regarding the need for a future change order related to the 2020 utility and street capital improvement project.
Mayor of the Council, so I'm going to turn this over to John McKay, our graduate engineer.
and let him explain why we're bringing this to you as a, as a workshop item, because it's, at a future date, we're going to have to bring you the change order. And so instead of having to get into the nitty gritty on that change order, I'm allowing him, I said five minutes, but you have a little bit longer than five minutes, John.
I told him three.
Three, it's three minutes.
No, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm going to start out with a little bit of show and tell, just so y'all can see, just a cool little thing. These are, this one's actually out of our system right over by Hillside, that's a pipe coupon off of the kind of cool valves, that's off of the concrete pipe, that's not from our system, I think that's Anderson, but it gives you the idea. So-
What is it?
Why are we here?
Explain what they're looking at.
So, so, so those are all, I was going to get to those, I just wanted to get them out of my hands, I stopped fidgeting with them. Why are we here is, these water lines over the years and years are, oh yeah, it's just two different types, but, um, we've lost a lot of valving in this old system, is what it comes down to. This system's been around for, some of the newer pipes in the system were, were put in in the 80s. So in this area, the 80s was the last little bit of infrastructure, there's been a lot of paving work that's happened, there's been a lot of new driveways, stuff like that, and what we found, I've got Edwin here tonight with me, he's been out in the field, you've seen him running around day in, day out for probably three months. And what it comes down to is, if you look up on that screen there, there's this big old blue line, and it's a mostly six-inch water line, through various years been installed, that air connects with itself. And there's so many spots where this touches, Lupe, can you go to the next page? It's PDF, yeah. There's so many spots where this, that blue line touches where the streets, the CIP project is touching, I highlight it, the CIP streets in orange here. And on every single spot where those touch, you end up having to go, you can actually go to the third one, you have to connect your old system to your new system. Sadly, those red dots did not show up well on the screen, but there are actually 25 of them. One, two, three, four, five, you know, they're, they're everywhere here. And what we're running into is, to make those kind of connections, you don't have very many options. So, because, but, you don't have very many options to be able to do that if you cannot take the pressure off of the line. So if you cannot get the water to stop, which we cannot, we, we are at our wits' end trying to get this water to stop, you have to do something, they're called insert valves and line stops. This is a third-party contractor, that's actually part of what you're holding in your hand, Lupe, can you pull up that video and play it at double speed? Because it's real slow? Yes, sir. It's a whole ordeal to come in, but what it allows us to do- I guess so. Wow, I found a three-minute ad for a one-minute video, there's a skip. So they can actually go through and attach a little connector into the pipe, Lupe, can you double speed this, or it'll be quite a while? Over in the settings, there you go. And then they have this specialized, it's basically like a, it's, it's a hole saw essentially, that can go in and drill into the pipe, and it takes out, that's what y'all are holding right now, is the little piece of the pipe that it held. And they're able to use this process to basically, on an old line, cast iron, concrete pipe, PVC, whatever it may be, they're able to go through and close down and stop the water, if you look, yep. That water was stopped there, and then they, that video jumped on me. But you're able to do what work you need to do. And at the end of the day, what this comes down to is, we're looking at-
Baby toy.
It, no. These have, these have hit me in the face before, they're not fun, they're, they're a lot of work, but we're looking at needing eight to 10 of these throughout this system, is what we're needing. And they run about $10,000 a pop, to give you round numbers. So over this CIP project, thank you Lupe, we've, we, we kept our costs under control as best we can. Right now, we're probably about, being conservative, about $50,000 ahead. So between extra services found, less services found, you know, sewer pipe that turned out it was in great condition, we don't need to touch it, stuff like that, we've been able to save some money. So you haven't been really hearing very much from me on change orders. This is expected to swing that in the other direction, where we're looking to be needing, this change order will bring us above. But the, part of the issue is, not having these water lines tied in is what's stopping us from having the paving crew in the area. Point blank, I know that's everyone, that's my biggest intention, that's everyone's biggest intention, is to get that paving done, but when you, you kind of saw in that video a little bit, it's a big hole you have to dig. So when we make those connections everywhere, it's, we're talking, you know, five, 10-foot holes that we're digging. Bigger than one in your yard, easily. So if you remember, we installed one of these, we, we did one, actually two of these at the Arlen's leak, if y'all remember, we had those three big holes opened up, one with the leak and those two other ones? That was me begging and pleading with the contractor to use such a small hole. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to come in and put in these good new roads just to go rip them back up again. So, but what we're, what we're also looking at is, and what I'm kind of asking for from Council is a bit of trust on that, you've seen me come to you many a times with change orders. Edwin and I are doing all we can, so is the water crew, Public Works, to minimize the number of these valves, but there, there's going to be some in these systems, and I don't just want to show up one day and say, Council, please approve change order. I didn't talk to you about why, how we got here, I need 50 grand. I don't like having those conversations, but that's what this is going to lead into. Some other benefits, so we can, we can knock out some of the water, the water in this area, we, we could, we could take a nuclear option. That would be shutting this down at La Salle, up at Cleveland, it would shut down the school and all the highway, and everything north of Washington, and that to me isn't a viable option. And to do that for five or six hours at a time for each of those 25 connection points, that's just not a viable option to me. And I think with the work that we've done to minimize some, there's a few that you're not seeing up there anymore because we've actually got them taken care of. This is the right call, is to put these valves in, but, but it's a big ticket item, I wanted to give you all a chance to say anything, have any questions y'all have on it, to talk to me now before I come and the work is done, because we want to get that work done in the next few weeks.
Did you say it was $10,000 a pop?
Yes, ma'am. So it's, if you want the actual number-
Five, that's $250,000, I mean, math's not much.
No, there's probably going to be about 10 of them that we need to do this. So there's, by phasing it and working our way from left to right, it is $100,000. That's why I want to have this conversation. So it, we are honestly talking about $100,000 on, now, now it is on a seven and a half million dollar project, but that doesn't make any of those dollars less expensive individually. That's why I want to have this conversation.
This is all just on water lines?
This is all water line. So sewer went in fairly smooth, we had to do a little bit of extra televised inspections. But-
Does it make it easier to do the change over and you don't have to worry about the testing and the infiltration?
The testing is still there, the infiltration is just on the sewer side, that's not an issue. But there is still the water, so the, the testing on the water is really not that hard, the contractors puts in stuff to disinfect the line as they go, and they just kind of have to prove that it'll hold pressure for a few days and prove that the, the water's clean. I, I would, I want both those tests on every single water line. So what you're talking about, we've been able to do in a couple of spots, for instance, the, um, the two connections up at Stacy and Hillside, or not Stacy, Schumacher and Hillside, Shoemaker, my Aggie was showing, and Sycamore and Hillside. Those are both onto a much larger line, so you were able to do a different technique that kept the water hot, hot we call it, you know, the water still flowing in that big line. But what you come down to is, all of these, these are on six-inch and smaller existing lines, and what we're putting in because it's fire code is six-inch. We're putting in six-inch. So if you think what those other ones do, that the little thing you were holding, it's a little bite out of the side of the pipe. Well, you can't really take a six-inch bite, bite out of a six-inch pipe. You don't have anything left over to substance, you know, that's the whole thing. And that's what we're coming down to, that blue one's actually off of that 10-inch line over there by Hillside. So that's what a six-inch bite looks like, and it's just, we've got to shut down the water some.
And I will say, you know, I guess three, four months ago, he came to me with this problem, and I said, let's work on it. And we pulled staff away from making water leak repairs and so on and so forth, because it does take more than one person to turn the valves. It takes multiple staff out there to research where they're located, he's been working on the map room, come in on weekends sometimes, so we were really stretched thin on trying to get this going. And then, so here's another thing, how long do we work on this? I can't keep, or we cannot keep, saying, okay, we can't bring in the paving crew because we got to get those pa, uh, roads paved, you know? So we're kind of pushing back the project a little bit and asking Kishnik to say, give us some time, give us some time. Well, at some point, they're going to say, well, now we're past the project limit that you gave us at 420 days. We're not going to make that, because you're telling us to hold back, don't get the paving crew in, eh, crew in, excuse me. So, you know, it's me pushing them to do whatever you can to find the valves. Well, we've, we've maxed out, we've reached our limit, and so this is why we're here to say, hey, we need a change order, because we need to move forward with bringing in the curb crew and the paving crew as soon as we can, so we don't lose more money on the project.
So is this hiring a company to come do this?
Yes, so we end up doing it, it goes, pardon?
How much is that piece of equipment?
What?
That does that?
It's the experience to deal with it, you don't want to, no, you, you don't want to-
These, these, this contractor really probably only does this.
There's, and there's, there's two people, two companies I know of in all of Texas that do this, and it is an incredibly specialized, not just piece of equipment, but skill. It really is, and I've seen it go wrong, I thought, sometime I'll show you the video of one of these exploding in my face. It pops, it, it, you know-
I don't want it to go wrong.
No, 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 but that's what I, I-
I, I mean, that was my question, if you can buy the equipment and pay someone to do it, and cheaper, I don't understand why we're paying so much money. And I also don't understand the whole piece of equipment either, so that, that's my deterrent in that, is not having that knowledge. I think it's cool. Actually, we'll probably Google it later so I can learn more, but, yeah, that's cool.
So, just a little fun fact, how many times do you turn a valve on a eight-inch line?
On an eight-inch line, it's 27 turns.
Okay, so by hand, you're doing, in circles, yeah. So we have a valve exerciser that does that, but it does take sometimes two staff members to work the arm and so on and so forth. So if you have a water leak that is on Neal Street, and I'm just throwing out a street, it might take six to eight valves to kill that section of Neal Street. So it's very time-consuming to have staff spread out in that whole area to fix the water leak. So there may be times that you see staff, what we call fixing it hot, is they're down in the water-
They're in it.
They're in it, trying to fix it without affecting a cer, certain areas, or we, we don't know where the valves are, or they haven't been turned in 50 years, you know, so on and so forth, you know? So 100%, I have tried everything, or staff have, has tried everything they can to keep this cost down. But we're at our wits' end at this point, and I, and we can't delay the project anymore without costing the city more money. So that's why he's here to explain all that.
And also from a, just from a safety and man, and just risk management, I, I do not like when Public Works has to do, they have to do repair leaks hot. I mean, I, I've been there, I've watched them. There is a lot of safety issues there, I mean, you, yeah, you can't-
There's a lot of water coming out.
It's a lot of water going quick, I mean, what happens, it fills up too quick and your, and your, your pumps aren't able to pump it out quick enough. What if you slip? So there's a lot of things, and so the more of these valves that we can have to, to help this process, it's going to cost a little bit more. But I will tell you, you know, like you said, 80s, back in the 80s, so we're, we're working on stuff that should have been maintained years ago, and so-
Wasn't there a huge amount of efficiency that will be brought from this?
For being able to take down these valves, yeah, I, I would honestly say so, so, yeah.
I mean, you actually have a-
Because that's kind of where we are is, so to, to get just a smidge more into the weeds, just a smidge, I promise, we have one option that's about, you know, $9,000, and we got one option that's about 10.6 apiece, that, those are the real numbers. And so by going with the 10.6, what we can do is, it's something, so, so the little video that you just saw, at the end of the day, that the pipe's still hot. Well, the whole point of this is, we don't want that pipe from the 80s, or, in one case, we think it's the 40s.
I'm sure it is.
The last is not the 20s.
Yeah, yeah. So we don't, we don't want those to still be under pressure underneath our new roads either. So this gives us better ability to make sure that those lines that we're not using don't just sit under pressure waiting one day to leak. For fun, and then we're back to, because we don't have valves on it, we're back to repairing them hot, all that fun jazz.
Well, will the money be there, Jason, or is something that's going to be cut?
So we'll, we'll figure, so we've, we've got to remember, we got the water tower and water well and other projects, and so I've already brought that to his attention, that he's going to have to find savings somewhere. And so if we go through the budget process, we'll know a little bit more in detail, but he, he understands he's got to find savings somewhere.
Can the CIP be amended at all?
So we, so, so ideally, we need to get further along on the water tower, water well, determine, you know, we issued that debt back in-
Last fall.
2022, 20, 2022?
Yeah, no, it was 22.
2022, and so we're in the process of just fixing to bid that out, and so once we know where those bids come in, look at the cost and see how close we are, we might have to issue more debt for, just for that project. So if there's that, then we might need to look at truing up some of these costs too with that. So, so Councilman Harris, I-
Well, there are some options.
We have options, I, I can't tell you yes or no, other than we're going to have to, we'll have to dig in and figure out where we're going to come up with the money, yes, sir.
Is all of this being entered into the GIS system?
It will be, yes.
Ideally, all these new valves and everything, we, they're, they're trying to track as much as they can, so they know from now on where they-
And they're, they're walking around-
Theoretically, our successors and their successors are not out of this problem.
Correct.
Correct. I would not wish that map room on anybody else.
They know it's going to make it easier on them down the road, so they definitely want to know where all this is.
And the bright side of this is, there is, has been a lot that's, a knowledge that's come into the system, you know, through this process. There, there's valves no one remembered, I won't call them out because they just snuck in, but there's valves that people weren't aware of or were hidden, you know?
In either back of his head, it's all you can hear.
So the, you know, a perfect example, Moore and Everett Street. And I am going to call you out, Fee, did you know there were three valves underneath that pavement? Because I don't think anybody in the water system knew those valves were there, you know? They, they were paved over in the 80s, so it's been a good, we found that there's a water line that runs and connects between Everett and Neal over on Moore. There's not a single water tap on there. It doesn't show up in our maps, but there's a valve on it, and we were able to find it through old plans and through finding stuff, and Edwin struggling to try to get water shut down in various areas and realizing there's some connected pipe somewhere.
Yeah, I turned 12 valves and that fire hydrant at the bottom of Moore is still hot.
Yeah, we still-
I'm at the top of the hill with this diggy, and it's like, hold on.
But the house right in front of the fire hydrant has no water. But the fire hydrant's working. It's, it's, it's a struggle, and really, we're at the point that we're, we're needing to put in some of these extra valves, they weren't budgeted. They are a fairly reliable product, both of them are. Where possible, I'm planning to, you know, if we're, if we just need to, one, one connection, if it's a spot like, oh, give me a good example, right, up here. So up here, there's a big six-inch line, it comes down Victoria, comes down Jutson all the way and hits Neal Street. But up here, we need to kill, we need to get the water coming, stop coming at us from the north on one side, well, okay, that might be a valve, because I'm need it not come at me from the north here, and here, and here, and here, and here, but I only need it to not come at me from the south one time. So in that case, I'd use the cheaper of the two options, the, the temporary, they call it a line stop instead of the- it a line stop instead of the full-blown insertion valve, insert valve. You know, we're trimming it and we're thinking all this stuff to absolutely minimize the cost, but.
You probably also do them in order of kind of, I don't want to say importance, but you know what I mean, there's certain areas have a more of a need to get it done.
Yeah, so right over Neal and Hillside is one of the critical connections, if we can get that water gone right there at Neal and Hillside, there's something connected along Hillside, or we think we've got it chased away from Stacy, we think it might be down Neal, underneath all that, it's underneath concrete. So, you can't look at those pipes, you can't see where the buried valves are, but if we can get it controlled there, and I'm actually, you know, it'll actually be right there just past Moore Street, if I can get it controlled there, I've got it stopping, it's not coming at me from the highway anymore. And so, then the next time, now that I'm on my new system, my new lines, now I just have to control it from that point. It's a new valve, it's part of the project, you know, I have that control, and you can start chipping away at it. But as part of that, dealing with chipping away at it and trying to do the minimal cost, I can't tell you tonight, I need nine, I can tell you we're projecting about ten, you know, because if we find a valve, you know, had the valve up at McNair and.
Neal.
Neal worked, that's would have eliminated one of these, but we dug it up, we got on it, that valve doesn't work. So, there's one, and we're projecting that one, but it's those kind of things that make this a bit odd to come at after the fact, because if I need eight, I need eight, I'm not going to put in nine, but.
Not at ten thousand dollars.
I know. No, I have a lot more other things I want to do, ask for.
We're going to bring this to you because, you know, you approved me to do change orders under a certain dollar amount, this is not going to be one of those, and so I wanted something this big to be brought to you as a workshop item, so you can have questions, see on the paper what it looks like and why.
I'll be honest, I'm really surprised we haven't had a ton more change orders considering what conditions this order is going to be in, I'm just thinking the truth.
Sometimes you don't want to put it out there, though.
So.
We have a lot of meetings you have in the courtside to look farther in advance and going, you know, we're going to have a problem down here, and let's see what we can do to fix it. Thank you for pushing to have that done that way.
The honest answer is we're tracking the changes in the field, but as long as it's they owe us money, not us owe them money, we're we're trying to manage it that way.
So good, yeah.
So, so far, I've been able to keep the needle in our favor on the contract, this is going to swing it the other way, which is why we're having the conversation.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're turning to the moment.